That was...
I think that was Manny breathing into the... Good evening. It's November 18th, 2025, and it's a little past 6:30. And you're at the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors meeting. If you would please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Rick Nagel from Redeemer, Modesto.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, I just want to begin this evening by saying thank you. Thank you for our leadership here within our county, within our city. Thank you for all the leaders that are represented in this room and all the voices that they represent. And as I look through this agenda, I can just see all the hard work that's been happening behind the scenes for so long. So thank you for all those who have labored and collaborated. And I just pray would you bless their work? Would you bless all the hands and all the minds and all the individuals that that work represents? But I'm so thankful that so many people in this community care about good things happening here. And so we just pray would good things continue to happen here in our area? Lord, would you bless our community, would we all experience your love, your grace, and your goodness? And I just pray also this evening that every voice that is going to be represented would be heard clearly, and every approval would be made with joy. In your name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, next up on the agenda is presentations. We do have three of them, and the first one is an update on Veterans Behavioral Health Access Initiative. Ruben Imperial.
Chairman Condit, Board of Supervisors, CEO Hayes, County Council of Us. I'm here with my colleague from Aging and Veteran Services, Ryan Kedley. And we are here and thankful to present on this important initiative aimed at strengthening behavioral health access for veterans in the county and creating a culture, creating an organization and community that recognizes veterans as a culture. We are also recognizing the support from our veteran community here today. Mr. George Rantana, Jack Griffith, and Kelly Cohello, who have worked with us over the last year in crafting this vision, along with Supervisor Chance Condit. Veterans in our community often face complex and fragmented access to care, especially behavioral health care. Our goal is to help bring clarity, coordination, and accountability to that experience. Under the leadership of the previous Behavior Health Director, Mr. Tony Bartam, BHRS joined this collaborative effort with Supervisor Condit and the veterans that we're recognizing here today. We are building on that foundation to ensure that our local veterans receive the support that they need, especially in a time of crisis. First, we are proposing the development of a clear, easy-to-follow roadmap for veterans and their families. This roadmap will outline how to access services through behavioral health, veterans administration, commercial health insurance, Medi-Cal managed care, and other community partners involved in serving the veteran population in our community. And just importantly, we will distribute it widely so that it reaches the people who need it most. Second, we will conduct a coordinated inventory of all of the existing behavioral health, housing, and supportive services available to veterans in our community. This will help us understand where strong navigation support already exists, where services may be overlapping, and where critical gaps remain. This will help guide our Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, planning, and key partners. Third, we will also convene a Veterans Behavioral Health Advisory Group in partnership with Ryan and Aging and Veteran Services. This group will be composed of veterans working in the behavioral health field who can provide firsthand clinical expertise. They will advise us and our provider network on evidence-based, veteran-informed clinical practices and on strategies to strengthen treatment capacity for veterans, for veterans across both county-operated programs and our community-based programs. And then finally, this initiative will also promote collaboration in the implementation of our effort. We will align this work with our county's overall efforts focused on improving behavioral health access. We will bring together key veteran-serving partners and agencies to coordinate efforts, share information, ensure no veteran falls through the cracks. This effort is about clarity, coordination, and honoring our commitment to those who have served. So with your support of this resolution today, we will create a more unified and accessible behavioral health system for veterans in Stanislaus County. And with that, I'm going to pass it to my colleague, who will share with you about the veterans as culture part of this initiative.
Thank you, Ruben. Good evening, Chair, members of the Board, Chief Executive Hayes. I would like to begin, as I always do, by sincerely thanking the Board and the Chief Executive Office for your continued and unwavering support of the Veteran Services Office and your support of our county's veterans. Your commitment ensures that those who have served our nation receive the respect, resources, and advocacy that they deserve. I also want to commend BHRS Director Imperial and the entire leadership team for their ongoing dedication to the No Wrong Door policy. This approach ensures that every individual, regardless of where they first seek help, receives timely, coordinated, and compassionate support. It reflects a system that truly meets people where they are. I want to further highlight the strong partnership between the County Veteran Service Office and Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. Together, we're working to ensure that veterans receive culturally informed care that recognizes the importance of veteran identity and shared military experiences. These experience...
Right here, we have a Protecting Soldiers' Rights Hero, Community Hero War. The first one is to our great leader of BHRS. If you don't know, this man took a step back from the Stanislaus County corporate ladder to help us. With us initiative, Stephen Gordon. Then the other man of the evening is the gentleman who opened the doors for us. You are welcome. And those flags are not backwards. We wear these flags on our uniform, and it's not backwards. We're driving the flag forward. And both these men tonight have taken veterans' causes to heart, and they are driving our flag forward in its appreciation from our community to theirs during this month. So thank you, Ruben. Thank you, Supervisor Condit. We appreciate everything.
All right, next up on the agenda, it, presentations. Seek American Awareness and Appreciation Month in Stanislaus County. Supervisor Grealish.
Good evening, everyone. I have the privilege and honor of recognizing National Seek Awareness Month. Back many years, I think during the Obama administration, November was declared as National Seek Awareness Month. And the relevance to that this month is it was the birth month of our prophet, Sir Gurdhan Agnivji, who was born in 1469, who started the Sikh religion. So as you can see, we have a robust Sikh community here in Stanislaus County and in California. Sikhs are the fifth-largest religion, numbering about 30 million worldwide, with approximately 500,000 Sikhs nearly in California and a good majority of them here in the San Joaquin Valley. Sikhs originated from mostly Punjab, India. They first entered California in 1899. The oldest Sikh temple in the country is in Stockton, California, because many of the Sikhs came through the Port of Stockton, and that's why many of them settled here in the San Joaquin Valley. So that temple was built in 1914. Local Sikh temple here, there's two Sikh temples in Stanislaus County. One in Series, Houston, Modesto. We kind of make it all sound, it's a Houston address, but we call it the Sikh Temple Modesto Series. And there's one also in Turlock. Most of the members of the audience that are here from the temple are from the congregation at the Sikh Temple in Modesto, which is my home congregation as well. We have close to 5,000 members. If you've ever driven past Santa Fe and Hatch Road and wondered what that beautiful-looking building is, that's the Sikh Temple, which originated in 1984. And the structure was built in 1998, and we continue to grow. Our congregation continues to grow. And I had the honor of being the Secretary-President of that temple at 18 years old. So a lot of these gentlemen put a lot of confidence in me, so thank you so much for that. Sikhs, and I'm kind of Westernized by saying Sikhs, but it's really Sikh. And what Sikh means is it's a disciple or a follower. And we feel that we're disciples of not just religion, but of humanity, how to be good humans. And the tenets of our religion are always remember God, work hard, and share your blessings. And so for those three tenets, the Sikhs are very involved in different businesses. From farming, that's what we know best, because most of us come from a farming background. The region that we come from in India is very similar to the Central Valley, agricultural heritage, where we all are farmers. And now we've diversified through education. Many are leaders in the medical community, in the business community, in the trucking community. So a very diverse profession and in all walks of life, making rich contributions to a social, cultural, and economic vibrant Stanislaus County. So again, I want to thank all the people, a lot of the members that are here today. They're members of our congregation, members of our management committee at the temple, and then our head priest is here also. So I know there's a lot of them, and so you might have to use the wide angle on the camera, but I would like to invite all of them to come up, please.
Hey Manny? Manny?
Manny.
Manny. Sometimes it's easiest to just actually come in here. That, you might want to do that.
So again, I'm just going to read a little bit of the proclamation. I told about the Sikh history. So now therefore, it be resolved that the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim, hereby proclaim November 2025 as Sikh American Awareness and Appreciation Month in Stanislaus County, signed by all the members of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you for everybody for being here. I appreciate the youngins for coming. Hopefully, this inspires you for public leadership and contributing to Stanislaus County. Thank you again so much. I appreciate it.
First of all, I'd say thank you to Board of Supervisors for actually giving us time acknowledging Sikhism. I don't think I can echo more than what Manny's already said. But I'd like to go ahead and also add that Dali Singh, which was our congressman in the valley in 1954, was the first Sikh, the first colorment to get elected to the United States House of Congress. So he was our representative back in the 50s. And number two, the highest official that I can think of in our Sikh faith is serving as Deputy District, I'm sorry, Deputy U.S. Attorney, right behind Pam Bondi. Her name is Harmeet Dhillon. So prominent Sikh community members and throughout the world, serving. Thank you very much for giving us time and acknowledging tonight, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, you honored Board Supervisors. The, all the time I see you in the Sikh temple, and we appreciate you honoring us. And we live here, I'm living here since Modesto, 1975, and I have a farmer. And I appreciate you guys recognize us. We are, we are part of this community, so we want to help. This is our country. So I think a lot of people these days hate this. But in our mind, we don't have a hate. Our guru tells us, respect all the religions. We don't push somebody to make, become a Sikh, no. We make, if you are Christian, Muslim, Hindus, we, we, good Christian, good Muslim, good Hindus. We don't promote Sikhism with a soul, no. Muslims was dead there, but that a long time ago. And we are very appreciative that you honor us. Thank you. Waidhukal sah, waidhukigipad.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Opportunity Stanislaus Update on Strategic Initiatives. Dave White. Good evening, Dave.
Hi, nice to be here tonight. It's a great honor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the Board and City or County Management Staff. Every year, it's my duty to come and report on our activities. And I'm glad to be here tonight to report on Opportunity Stanislaus, on Volt Institute, and on the Valley Sierra SBDC. I just want to make a comment. I really appreciate the Sikh community, and I really appreciate this region, this county, for being so responsive and so accepting of other faith cultures. I really appreciate that. So thank you for having them here tonight. It means a lot to me. So what we're going to cover, I'll make this brief, but we're going to talk about economic development initiatives, our talent development, Volt Institute, Small Business Development Center, and our support for the County Blueprint, the Stanislaus 2030 County Blueprint and Beam Circular. To start off with, in economic development, we are very engaged in supporting and leading efforts on attracting new companies to the county and also to support others that do the same. We, just in the last year, we've seen a total of investment of different projects that we've worked on of $156 million, which means an estimated payroll of $165 million. Some of the projects that you may have heard about, divert, Amazon, the new project in Turlock, article.com and Patterson, Sage Plastics, a company from Southern California that opened a new plant here in Modesto, and Caribou Biofuels, which is working now collaboratively with, with Flori Industries to do some projects. Companies that are adding value to our community. There's also, we've had a pivotal role to work on the County Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy called the SETS Document. And I serve on the EDAC Committee, the Economic Development Action Committee, and support those efforts to work collaboratively with all of our partners. In talent development, we have a department dedicated to that, to programs to help improve leadership and improve soft skills especially, helping businesses deal with challenges as it applies to the workforce. As we know, coming out of the pandemic, there are lots of challenges. And so we started a customer service academy this last year, class of 60 in May, had a follow-up class. We do the Supervisor Development Academy, the Senior Leadership Series, a number of programs to help support employers to help improve leadership skills here in the county. Volt Institute, we had 120 enrollments last year, which is great. That's for our legacy programs in the training center, where we have people come in, they learn how to be maintenance mechanics, controls, automation techs. And we've added some new programs. We added a supervisor, we added a, what's called a smart control troubleshooting system, which teaches how to troubleshoot sophisticated control systems and how they interact with PLCs. And so these are the types of skills and the jobs of today and tomorrow as we navigate more into an automation economy. Our Volt in the Go program started two years ago, but last year we went full scale. This is a program where we can take training actually directly to, to the community center, to the, to the industry, to the plant. We've been able to take that around throughout the county with, through a number of partnerships with other groups, nonprofits, and corporate sponsorships. And last year, our goal was 200 students to be taught. We had 608 total students taught through Volt in the Go. It's really been a game changer, and we're really moving at that pace now, working through several partnerships. And just through the increased wages that we're seeing, that we monitor very closely. Typically, when a student comes into Volt Institute, they're making minimum wage if they're coming from the community or close to minimum wage. They're coming out, the average, the average salary, average wage coming out is $30 an hour. And if you go into controls and instrumentation, you take these advanced courses. We're seeing jobs over $40, $50 an hour even. So that's a great increase of wages through the, through the Volt program. The Valley Sierra Small Business Development Center, we have 28 consultants who are professionals. Many of them are retirees that provide free technical business consulting to small businesses. To qualify as a small business, you need to have under 500 employees. And so we do a lot of work with, with all sorts of businesses throughout the county, some amazing stories. A number of new startups that we were, that we were supportive of this last year, 52. Number of small business owners served, 776. Unique clients served, 699. Number of new jobs created through our work, 200 jobs, and new revenue to the county of over $6 million. So we're very proud of that work. We have a great team, and, and they work really hard. Support for Beam Circular and Stanislaus 2030. We actively are engaged with both groups. We have staff that are involved in the different committees and supporting the different initiatives. We're working closely with Beam right now on business attraction efforts and particularly pursuing companies in the Bay Area that are in this space. And we also have been very supportive. We, we actually have received a grant from each, from Stan 2030 and Beam Circular. The Beam Circular grant is to support a bio-manufacturing training program at Volt Institute. So we're really excited about that. We just were the recipients of a grant through Stanislaus 2030 to help support training operators, machine operators, and helping them to convert to be controls techs and higher-type automation techs in the field. And so we're excited about that program. That'll be starting soon. And additional support, you can see on there, there's quite a bit going on. We were, recently this last year, we hired Eric Nguyenfeld, who had worked at Beam, to be the Executive Director of Volt Institute. Eric has a long career working in private industry, but also in academia, and has done a wonderful job. And we're working very closely with, with these other entities to produce the kind of training, the kind of programs that will be valuable as we go forward. And then other specific support to the county. As I mentioned, I serve on the EDAC Committee. I also serve on the Board of the Enhanced Infrastructure Finance District for the Crow's Landing Industrial Business Park. And we're excited about that project moving forward. Also, I, I'm involved with the county in different levels. At CAL Ed, the California Association of Local Economic Development, I serve on the Board of that organization. In fact, I am the Chair-elect. In fact, I am the Chair-elect. So next July, I'll start a two-year term as the Chair of that Board, which is great because I can bring issues that are pertinent to our county and pertinent to the Valley to that statewide organization and help them understand the needs that we have here locally. And looking ahead, the next five years, we're launching our five-year plan. One thing we're working on is an advanced manufacturing training center, Advanced Manufacturing Center of Excellence. What this is, you can actually Google, there's one like it in Detroit. It's called LIFT, L-I-F-T. And what it is, it's not just about the talent. It's also about having a center where we have what we call sandboxes, where we can showcase new technologies and how they apply to local companies. Different types of robotic systems, different types of automation, and to help de-risk the application of these technologies into industry. We're working on some new leadership programs, a leadership emphasis to teach critical thinking and problem-solving skills. Our focus on economic development is on advanced manufacturing, particularly bio-manufacturing, to add those high-paying jobs to our local county economy. And then through the SBDC, a corporate and government procurement center to teach small business how to contract, the art of contracting, and how to become a preferred vendor to work with these entities. So we're really excited about that. And with that, that is my presentation. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer them right now.
Any questions for Dave?
I really appreciate your support. It's, we're really excited about the future. Really good things are happening in our county, in our communities, and it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, next up is Public Comment Period. Public Comment is a time of those in attendance to speak on items not already on today's agenda. Please state your name for the record. Direct all comments towards the dais, and so does fair for every speaker. Please keep comments to the five-minute time limit. First card that I have is Mary Ann Cannon.
Golden ticket, Willy Wonka, you know? Does it start when I arrive here? Okay. Good evening, it's so nice to be here. I'm here tonight with many of our nonprofits to share our collective response to the recent disruption of SNAP, CalFresh benefits in our community, which we all know happened due to the federal government shutdown. And please know, we're not here for applause or accolades, nor are we here to admonish. We're here simply to call attention to how our nonprofits, especially our Family Resource Centers and Food Pantries, responded to what we knew was going to be a crisis for many local families, seniors, and students. Like many in our community, I was shocked to learn that more than 90,000 people in Stanislaus County rely on some form of public assistance to make ends meet and put food on their table. While I was shocked at that number, I mean, I wasn't really because much of Stanislaus Community Foundation's work, as you all know, in the past decade has been to address the root causes of poverty. And much of this work has been in partnership with all of you through focus on prevention, the Cradle to Career Partnership, and Status Loss 2030. So we've been hard at work through those initiatives to create dynamic new industries, as you just heard, add quality jobs that pay a living wage, fight the affordability crisis in our region, add childcare slots, support small businesses and entrepreneurs, and invest in educational pathways and workforce solutions. We've been doing that, and you all know that, and you've been at the table with us. So I thank you for that. We are not usually at the Community Foundation in the business of emergency response. But we could not look away as that deadline of November 1st loomed. So our team did what it always does. It jumped in, and we joined the daily calls between United Way, First Five, our Family Resource Centers, Second Harvest Food Bank, our Food Pantries, and CSA to really understand and begin to mitigate this man-made crisis. We started those daily calls on October 26th. And by October 31st, we had agreed that we would send inquiries from families seeking food through United Way's 211 system. We set up a fund at Stanislaus Community Foundation that raised more than $300,000 in less than 48 hours. That number is now at 370,000. We developed a set of social media messages and graphics that were super simple and pointed people to 211 and Second Harvest, so they would know where to get non-perishable food, and where to donate money, and where to just seek resources. At the same time, the Family Resource Centers quickly ramped up using a process they created during the pandemic to check SNAP eligibility and ensure non-duplication. They negotiated discounts off grocery cards bought in bulk. And Stanislaus Community Foundation, by Friday, October 31st, had personally walked checks into Family Resource Centers and Food Pantries in every corner of our community, in every one of your districts, so that we could support families that would start struggling the next day. We're now preparing to make some final grants to Food Pantries as Thanksgiving approaches because we know the need is still out there, even though the cards have been replenished. I'm pointing this all out to you, and the reason I'm here tonight is because I think what happened in the last few weeks is highly instructive for all of you and for all of us. We know that the one big beautiful bill slashes healthcare access, rental and utility assistance, mental health programs, school resources, youth programs, food assistance, and other much-needed benefits to the most vulnerable in our community. And unfortunately, that vulnerable community is the majority of our community. We can't change what just happened at the federal level. What we can do is what we've always done with all of you, which is come together as a community of providers and understand our assets, our map, our resources, communicate in a quick and unified way so that people are not confused and know where to go. Mutual aid, mutual accountability. That's what we're asking from all of you. That's how we've usually worked with you. I think if we do this, if we think and plan ahead, we can serve our community through any downturns and disasters, whether they be man-made or natural. It's what frankly, our community requires of us. So one of the reasons we're here tonight, and you're going to hear from others, is to ask you as the Board to begin to work in earnest partnership with the nonprofits that serve our community because they are your delivery system for a lot of the services you provide as a county. I want to mention that we had a great and productive call with the CEO's office and the County Services Agency late last week to discuss what this collaboration might look like, and we're really looking forward to working together. Finally, I want to leave you with one of the questions that was posed by one of the nonprofit staff that was on the call. She asked recently, what if our nonprofits had not stepped in? What would our families do, and where would they go? We cannot let our safety net be torn and frayed because more and more people will fall through it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Next up is David Seymour and Keith Hyatt.
Hello, I'm David Seymour, the Executive Director of the McKinney Museum and Historical Society.
And I'm Keith Hyatt, a volunteer for the McKinney Museum and Historical Society.
Supervisors, today we stand here to present to you the end result of two years of research and collaboration. Stanislaus Story: Change and Continuity in Stanislaus County. This second edition was approved by Modesto City Schools and is in compliance with the Fair Act of 2012, which incorporates further examples of diversity in Stanislaus County. The first update, this is the first update to this 1941 original book in over 40 years. Through private donation, we have been able to supply a classroom set to 22 elementary schools in the Modesto City School System. This is targeted for third graders. And we have an ultimate goal to fundraise so that all 88 elementary schools countywide have access to this new exploration of history of their community.
Okay, so tonight, we are here to present you as our current supervisors and everybody on the dais with a copy of the book because it's representative of our collective county history. And if I can invite David to come through here and present the books.
Yeah.
Bring him up to the court. Thank you. We've got these here in order from Manny to Condit because they're personalized. Yeah, yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
I'd be remiss if I didn't say Keith Hyatt was a fellow Johansson Viking. Go Vikings!
All right. Next up is Andrew Timby.
Thank you, Board, for the opportunity to come before you. I am also in response to what Mary Ann brought with you before, representing Sierra Vista Child and Family Services, one of the larger nonprofits in the community, operating off our C's, Family Resource Centers across the county. One of the things that we wanted to report to you in result of the stoppage of funds to the CalFresh is that in partnership, that we operate five resource centers throughout the county, and our five resource centers were able to distribute up to $75,000 in food assistance through grocery cards. The total participants we helped were about 315 people, including 194 families. We, also 121 individuals. And the vast majority of these were involving children who were not able to receive their food due to the government shutdown. One of the reasons I wanted to come also before you as also representative of the nonprofit community is that, as mentioned before, we do also see on the ground a looming crisis in Stanislaus County in regards to the potential changes that are resulting from HR1, the big beautiful bill that will take place primarily implementing in 2026. As we are on the ground distributing CalFresh replacement dollars, one of the things that we noticed in the local communities is they were also asking what's next. There's already word out in the community as a result of Medi-Cal changes, the discontinuing of Medi-Cal eligibility, as well as the troubles with rent assistance and everything else. And as you guys know, that roughly 45, 46% of our community is on Medi-Cal. We also have about 20% that are foreign-born in this community, and as we just learned, about 70% are on CalFresh. We have a huge population in this community that's going to be directly impacted by the changes that are coming in 2026. And the nonprofits are starting to bear that brunt. And so one of the things that we are asking of this Board and of the county in general is that we ask for some participation upfront in trying to solve the systemic crisis that is going to be plaguing our community, not only now, but into the near future as we are now on the front line, starting to receive this population, asking what's next. They are looking to the nonprofit community to turn towards not only financial assistance, but steps towards opportunities to succeed. We know the county is grappling with this. But because we have such a large population, our nonprofit sector is being buried. We are being buried very heavily in the onslaught of the populations, especially in the localized communities. Some of the predominant communities that were starting to feel this impact directly is in West Modesto, South Modesto. Some of our other colleagues here in areas of Patterson and Turlock are also feeling the impacts on this. And I know many of you, I've been able to work with many of you and seeing some of the impacts on this stuff. But I wanted to come forward on behalf of the nonprofit community and the local communities to say there is a crushing change that's going to start taking place. So we, I fervently ask that this Board consider the work that the nonprofit community is doing, not only to provide the safety net, but the system change that we're all looking for to really elevate this county and this community so that the nonprofit community is not crushed under the weight of the population that's needing the assistance coming forward in 2026. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Next up is Kaylee.
Good evening, my name is Kaylee Brown. I'm with Center for Human Services, and I oversee our Family Resource Centers. And I'm also here with Mary Ann to just discuss again our response. And so Center for Human Services Family Resource Centers are in Oakdale, Patterson, Newman, and Series. And so we also serve kind of the outlying areas that are near those communities. And I just wanted to share a little bit about what that experience was like for families. I was there at our Family Resource Centers, helping to intake families as they were waiting in lines for hours, sometimes in the rain. We had put pop-up tents out, trying to, you know, make it as decent as it could be. But a lot of families were very confused about what, you know, where to go after they came to us. We did not have enough to provide every single family we saw their full benefits, obviously. So we provided them $100 cards, up to $200 cards, depending on their family size. And again, even, you know, that's not, that doesn't go very far. And so families were confused about when benefits would come back. Families were confused about whether other things were going to be affected, like their Medi-Cal, or their cash aid, things like that. And so I think I would just highlight that Family Resource Centers really are a hub in the community for people to come. And we saw, not just, when I say families, it's not just people with children. 16% of the families we saw were senior citizen families. And so there's a variety of different types of families that come to us for support. And I would just like to mention that a lot of our funding, actually all of our funding, is tied to very specific grant deliverables. And so that makes it challenging in times like this when we really need to be able to be more flexible and support whatever is emerging. And we're kind of constrained in a lot of ways. And so we are grateful for the Community Foundation to provide the funding that they did. But again, it wasn't enough. We had to turn families away because we ran out of about, what was it? About $30,000 worth of cards in about 24 hours. And that wasn't enough. We had people that we had to ask to come back the next day. And we know, obviously, as she mentioned, 90,000 families were impacted. So of course, we're not going to be able to serve everyone. But I think like Andrew and Mary Ann mentioned already, I think it's just hoping, you know, you all have been really great supporters of the Family Resource Centers. I think it's just trying to be proactive, I guess, to see how can we get ahead of this in the future because there will be more issues. We also responded during COVID in a very similar fashion to kind of this emergency, and what can we do? And I guess it just, I think we did a really great job this time. But it does make me wonder, if we have a better, stronger foundation, how could we better serve our community, right? If we're not always reacting, and yet, you know, if we have a more solid foundation. So I think, yeah, I just wanted to just share again and also offer appreciation to the Community Foundation, to United Way, and to each of you in the county because they, you know, we really did try to have a coordinated messaging to the community. And again, the word was out, and we are those trusted partners. And so just hope that we can continue to work together and see how we can strengthen things so that we can be, again, more proactive in the future and really serve all the people that need help, not just who might fit our deliverable for that contract. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kayla. Next up is Kristin.
Good evening, my name is Kristin Whitley, and I am with Aspiranet, Turlock Family Resource Center. So I came with the other FRCs, with United Way and Stanislaus Community Foundation. As we entered into November, we knew that there was a crisis on the horizon. And we immediately were ready to step into that crisis and meet the needs of the community. One of the beauties of the FRCs is the partnerships that we have. So we were already working with United Way, with the FRCs. We have that great partnership. And that allowed us, in this moment, to begin working and bringing it into action, like this plan to just meet the need of the community. And I just, I, we were able to do... And I just, I, we were able to do amazing things through through just the work that we did this last couple of weeks. So, we were able to do 243 gift cards, 357 families were served, 1,822 individuals, and we gave out over 3,700 food bags. It was amazing to see the community come together. Every time I would go and pick up groceries at the grocery store to refill our food pantry, the workers were just, they were trying to figure out what we were doing. And we had people contributing as we were in line, like, hey, can we give you money towards what you're doing? This is amazing work. We had people in line telling us their stories of how they were impacted by the snap shutdown. And, you know, every day, trauma walks through our doors at the F R C. And our job is to meet these people where they're at. Now, they already have these traumatic events that are happening in their lives. And when you're hungry and you have nowhere to go to get food, that makes it just so much more intense. And these families came to us, and you could see the pain and the frustration. They didn't know where to go. And we were the beacon of hope in that moment, meeting them where they needed us most. And we were able to step into that moment with resources, not just, hey, go to the next person, go to this place. We were able to give them resources at our location. Here's a food bag. Here is a gift card. And we were able to do that, only because of the partnerships that we had. So, San Marcos Community Foundation was huge, immediately mobilizing to give us the resources that we needed to do the work. We were the boots on the ground throughout this whole process, the last couple of weeks. It has been, it's been a lot. And I am just really thankful to, I'm thankful to the county. We were able to use our concrete support funding. We had over $11,000 left in our concrete support funding budget that we were able to use to buy a lot of the food that was in these food bags distributed. And I just, my encouragement tonight is that the F R Cs need a bigger seat at the table when we're talking about the changes that need to happen in the community. And, you know, we were like a triage unit at our F R Cs the last two weeks. And we're that anyways. Again, trauma walks through our doors on the daily. But this was people waiting outside of our doors for hours on end before we opened, just trying to get help. And so, we want to be able to be more proactive, like Haley said. We want to be a bigger part of the solution. We were able to mobilize within a day or two. And a lot of other agencies and places in the community were still trying to develop a plan. We were able to step into the moment of need because we were already ready for these moments. We just needed the funding and the resources to do it. So, what we're asking for from the community is that you give us a seat at the table. Help us. We're already the boots on the ground. We're already the people doing this. So, give us a voice and allow us to be a part of bringing the community the change that it needs and helping make sure that it happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. Next up is Christopher Sirian, Sirian? Close? All right. I apologize.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Siriani, and I serve as President and CEO of United Way of Stanislaus County. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and to share what we're seeing on the ground alongside our family resource centers and nonprofit partners. For the past three years, United Way has been convening and supporting a network of 13 family resource centers across the county. We have invested in capacity building, coordinated messaging, shared training, collaboration, and infrastructure, so that these centers, which are often the first line of support for working families, are prepared for moments exactly like the one we just lived through. When the snap delay put more than 90,000 individuals and over 50,000 households at risk, nearly 17 million a month in food assistance suddenly in jeopardy, our community felt the shock immediately. And I want to be clear, these are not families sitting idle. According to the 2025 Real Cost Measure, one in three households in Stanislaus County cannot afford basic necessities. And 97% of these families have at least one working adult. Even two full-time minimum wage jobs fall nearly $30,000 short of what it actually costs to raise a family here. These are families who are doing everything right and still falling behind. But when the snap delay hit, our network responded and fast. Because of the groundwork laid over the past three years, our F R Cs were able to mobilize within hours. And in just one week, as you heard, more than $300,000 in grocery gift cards were purchased and distributed to families across our county. But I want this board to understand that level of coordination was not accidental. It was the result of deliberate investment in building a strong interconnected safety net system. At the same time, our 211 Information and Referral Line, which we operate as the county's 24/7 centralized access point, experienced an enormous surge. Calls doubled, and website traffic increased to five times the usual volume during the last week of October and the first week of November. And for the first time in years, number one need was not housing, it was food. We also worked closely with the Community Services Agency to ensure that all official messaging went through 211, giving the public one consistent trusted place to get accurate information. That partnership was essential. It prevented confusion, reduced misinformation, and helped thousands of families find resources quickly when they needed it most. But even with all of that, even with an extraordinary community response, what we provided was still only a drop in the bucket compared to the scale of the need. And that brings me to why I'm speaking tonight. What we experienced these past few weeks is not an isolated crisis. It is a preview. Over the next year, many families may face significant increases in health insurance premiums as federal subsidies shift. Others may lose coverage entirely. Additional state and federal cuts are looming for programs that working families rely on. And when that happens, those same families were turned first to family resource centers, nonprofits, and 211, the very systems that are already stretched thin. Nonprofits will continue to rise to the occasion. We always do. But we cannot and should not be expected to absorb these challenges alone. If we want families to thrive, we must address the root causes. Families need opportunities to earn living wages. They need stability. They need a system that works upstream, not just in moments of crisis. And our family resource centers need to be strengthened, not just for emergency response, but for long-term community resilience. Tonight, I'm asking this board for partnership, true partnership. We need to begin planning now, together, for what's coming, for the rising needs, the challenge, the changing benefits landscape, and the vulnerabilities that will only grow if we do not act proactively. United Way and our nonprofit partners are ready. We have the infrastructure, the data, and the relationships. We simply need the county at the table with us, investing, planning, and ensuring that when the next crisis arrives, we're not responding out of urgency, but out of preparation. Because when we build systems that allow families to meet the basic needs, we build a stronger Stanislaus County for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. All right. Next up is John X. Mataka.
Good evening. John X. Mataka. I'm a community advocate for Valley Improvement Projects. Well, I just want to say that I echo what all these speakers have said. The work that the family resource centers and the nonprofit community do as the first line when people need food and other human needs is amazing. They deserve a seat at the table with everybody on this board and other people in the community. They deserve that for the work that they do. And they also deserve some funding, some backup, emergency funding. So, I'm not advocating just for a seat at the table, but I'm advocating to dig deep in the county budget and provide a little extra funding for these type of emergencies. During COVID, we did a survey out on the west side, and we were amazed too. During COVID, the number one issue back then was food. It was over housing. It was over everything. It was food. In a big agricultural county that we have, food continues to be an issue. So, anyway, so much for that. I'm here tonight to talk about the state policy on fumigants is environmental racism. Latino, indigenous, and farmworker communities bear the highest exposure rates. The Department of Pesticide Regulation has ignored O A W A health standards and approved unsafe risk levels of 1.3 D and other fumigants that are banned globally in over 40 countries, but heavily used here. There have been two documented drift incidents in Stanislaus County. Modesto Christian School, January the 19th, 2023, and Great Valley Academy, January the 26th, 2024. At that time, the schools did not know how to report drift, a sign of massive unreporting. Local leaders cannot wait for the state to do something. The Department of Pesticide Regulation has shown it will compromise community health to please industry. State-level protections remain weak and scientifically outdated. Counties, cities, and school districts have authority to go beyond state minimums. I'm going to repeat that. Counties, cities, and school districts have authority to go beyond the state minimums. Waiting for Sacramento to do something is accepting continued harm to our residents and children. We're advocating for a one-mile buffer, and that's supported by evidence, science, and community experience around schools. Anything less is knowingly exposing our children to harm and health issues. The Stanislaus Community Admission Reductions Plan, known as SCIRP, calls for stronger protections, expanded buffers, and transition to safer farming practices. We must implement these stronger protections locally and stop waiting for Sacramento and Department of Pesticide Regulation to do it. Counties, cities, and school districts can act now to fulfill SCIRP's stronger protections. And in closing, justice requires prevention, not reaction. Children cannot be acceptable collateral damage. Protecting children, supporting farmers, and protecting farmworkers are not contradictory, as many would like to say. Prevention is the only ethical path forward. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next up is Steve.
Hi, guys. I'm Steve. I'm a resident of Modesto. And I'm here tonight just to talk to you guys about a couple of things. And first of all, I would like to say that I just want to express warm heartfelt gratitude to Valley Improvement Projects and the community members and parents and so forth, who has stood with them. And they do a lot of really good work here in our county. I think it's pretty reasonable, the three demands that I see in one of their flyers here that they put out, basically what he's already explained, expansion of the school buffer zone. I would just urge you to put, like, scientific knowledge into practice and prioritize knowledge and the well-being of children and families over other concerns, like profits, whether it be, or, you know, political alliances. The second one was, if I think hard enough, I'd remember it. But, yeah, expanding the buffer zone, I believe it was. That was the first one. Oh, and then, and transition to organic in the buffer zone. It makes sense. It's close to schools. Why would we want chemicals floating through the air? And then, lastly, of course, they're asking that you phase out fumigants. I think all these are reasonable. I think that we live in crazy times, and there's a lot of talk about the well-being of children. And we obviously live under the thumb of a would-be authoritarian and all of his pals, and they do not give a damn about the well-being of children, right? And in these volatile times, it's a great opportunity for you guys to prioritize correctly as representatives of the people of this county. If democracy means anything, you will put children's well-being over pretty much everything else. Anyhow, I think it's reasonable, and I hope that you will basically give them everything we're requesting and send them a dozen donuts and some flowers. I'd also like to talk about another very serious concern that's been on my mind since I'm here. I must admit, I'm not really like up to date on the local movement pursuing some kind of board of accountability at the county level for law enforcement. So, I don't know exactly where that stands, but I know it's ongoing. And I just want to give you like a heartfelt account of some brief examples of why this county absolutely needs such an entity. As I've mentioned, we live in crazy times. Back this summer, I was arrested by Modesto police, literally for taking photographs of the license plates on unmarked vehicles that looked exactly identical to what I was watching on TV. And it turned out it was, you know, police in my own town, and they broke my finger for no reason at all, arresting me for no reason at all. And I was detained for 12 hours. I was kept in a concrete disgusting bathroom with six other men. And this is where it gets to the county, right? The entire day, I had no idea why I was being arrested, until later on, some corrections officers, like, helped me interpret the codes on my papers. That's disgusting, but that's a whole nother, you know, what have you. I was mistreated. We were all mistreated. I asked a nurse to look at my finger. I could not ask an officer for something that I genuinely needed without them getting pissed off. And at one point, this big, like, he looked like, what is it? There's The Hound and The Mountain. You've all seen Game of Thrones. So, The Mountain walks over to me, and he gives me, he wouldn't give me any time for what I needed. But at that point, after I pissed him off, and he walked over to our concrete bathroom, and he gave it an extra like five or six seconds to give me that glare that only means one thing. And it was, it was a threat. It was a bona fide, like, can't be confused. Any adult with an ounce of sense knows that if I stop and I stare you down, like I'm licking my chocks, I'm sorry, I'm licking my chops, it's because I wish I could do violence to you. This county needs an oversight board. Jeff Durcksey meets behind closed doors with far-right groups, with overlapping membership, with the Proud Boys and others. It's ridiculous. The kind of treatment I got, I witnessed a man being arrested at the transit center, and it was a very questionable situation. I tried to file a report, and our county, our sheriff is going out of their way to make it difficult to report a concern. I heard back three days later. Obviously, it was dismissed. They are not pure of heart, and the people have a right to be able to oversee. If there's anything left of democracy, thank you for letting me go a little over.
Thank you, Steve. Next up is Bianca Lopez.
Thank you. Good evening, Board members. My name is Bianca Lopez. I'm co-founder of Valley Improvement Projects. And today, I'm going to share a little bit more about what Mr. Mataka has already spoken of and shared some support with Steve. So, Valley Improvement Projects hosts several workshops, and we work on various issues relating to social and environmental justice. One of our current projects is our community emissions reduction for Stanislaus County, which we call the SCIRP. The SCIRP is a plan that is led by community members across the county to mitigate and to create a plan for reducing exposure to air contaminants. As you know, we have the worst air basin in the state, and we have the worst air, one of the worst air qualities in the country. And so, Valley Improvement Projects has hosted several community workshops, listening sessions across the county for multiple years already to produce this plan. Mr. Kiesa came out to a community meeting to hear about this plan, as well as he is a representative of the Air District for our county. And within that plan, and with community input, we do, we have heard from community members and experienced ourselves, as we also live in the county, that pesticide use near our homes and our schools is one of the major issues and concerns for many, many families. In 2021, we did, sorry, in 2023, we did a study about pesticide use in the county. And the earliest data that was available then was the data for 2021. We found that in collaboration with the Environmental Working Group, that over 6 million pounds of pesticides are applied in our county. More than 1 million of those pounds was actually Talone. And Talone is regulated by the Department of Pesticide Regulation. It is our number one fumigant and our number one restricted material that we use in Stanislaus County. That same pesticide is actually banned in 30 other countries, yet it is what we use here the most. And so, today, we had a press conference, and we joined other communities across the state where Talone is also a highly-used fumigant. And we had those three demands, that we want the local government to step in and protect our communities, because the Department of Pesticide Regulation has failed to do so with its new updated with its new updated regulation of talone. OWEHA, which is the Office of Environmental Health Hazard, has identified that .04 parts per billion is what we can be exposed to before we start to show signs of cancer. The safe harbor levels. The Department of Pesticide Regulation decided to ignore OWEHA's recommendation for the safe harbor levels and has sided with the talone company, or the company that makes this pesticide, and remained to regulate the talone use for .56 parts per billion. That's 14 times less protective than what OWEHA says we should be protected at. And as John mentioned, we have had two drift incidents at schools, I believe in Mr. Withrose District, at Great Valley Academy and Modesto Christian. At Modesto Christian Schools, 24 people showed signs of exposure to pesticides. Great Valley Academy, the investigative report says that staff have claimed that that one incident that was actually reported was not the first, and we doubt that it will be the last. We know that those schools and administrators do not know or did not know how to report, and we fear that that is true for the rest of the school districts that are surrounded by agricultural use. The Stanislaus County Act Commissioner, Linda Pinfold, has the authority, just as you do here at the county level, as representatives of the people who live here, to expand the buffer zone from 1/4 mile to 1 mile. There's lots of data and science that says and shows that pesticides drift well beyond the 1/4 mile, well beyond 5 miles. We're asking for a 1-mile buffer zone expansion, and you have the right and the power to do that. There is no scientific evidence that says that 1/4 mile is protective, but we already know that that is not sufficient. So we are here today asking for you to instruct the county commissioner to look into the expansion of this buffer zone. And of course, as we mentioned, we support farmers within that 1-mile buffer zone to receive funding, and we would help those farmers also, alongside with you all, to provide and look for funding for them to make this transition to sustainable practices that will not only protect the children, but also have a good outcome for our air, water, and healthy soil. Thank you.
Thank you, Bianca. That was my last public speaking card. Is anyone out in the audience like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment period and move into the consent Before the board takes any action on the consent calendar, does anyone in the audience wish to provide public comment on any matter on consent?
Yes.
Which items?
It's the one about the grant for the county commissioners. The county commissioners. Twenty, number 20, and B20, please.
B20. B6.
One about the improvements at the airport.
Okay. George, I'm going to be pulling, does any supervisor like to pull any item? I'm going to be pulling B12, and I will also have to excuse myself on B19. So I will take a motion on the consent calendar except for B6, B12, B19, and B20.
Motion to approve all items except for B6, B12, and B19.
And B20.
And B20.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Okay, B6.
Good evening, supervisors. I'm Kevin McCarty, District 3. I have a question about item 6. I want to know what these improvements are that you anticipate. Are they simply cosmetic improvements, or are they infrastructure improvements? What do they entail? Thank you.
Way to go, Patrick.
Hi, good morning, board members. Or, gosh, good evening. It's close to my bedtime, so it's almost morning. So every year, the county contributes taxes that it collects on property at the airport and passes that to the city of Modesto, who runs the airport. And the improvements are kind of high-level listed in the agenda item here. From previous years, it includes maintenance and painting of airplane hangars, installation of fire suppression systems, fence installation and other security improvements, bathroom facility upgrades, and electrician services. And then this last fiscal year went towards equipment purchases and maintenance, gutter facility upgrades, consulting services related to a commercial airline study, on-call consulting services, and as match for grant funding. In the current fiscal year, it will go towards a commercial air service feasibility study and to complete various improvements, such as crack sealing, gutter installations, and painting. So hopefully that answered it. Any questions?
Got that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on that particular agenda item? B6. All right, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion for approval.
Motion to approve item B6.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Okay, B12.
Chairman Condon, members of the board, George Petrolakis, 1104 12th Street in Modesto. Our office represents Mr. Cipinari, who owns four parcels along Patterson Road, just outside of Riverbank. And so he was one of the nuisance abatement matters related to the truck parking item. And our request tonight is to defer the abatement proceedings until an application that has been filed is processed through the planning department for ultimate decision by the board. It's a factually complex matter, because he owns four different parcels. One of his part, one of the parcels is his home parcel where he lives. Two of the parcels are, he has a legal nonconforming use for a truck terminal, and the abatement matter is about the fourth parcel where the truck terminal use sort of grew over the years in a manner where Mr. Cipinari thought he had permits allowing it, but he didn't. And so that's what we've applied to sort of go through that process to address that use. So that's the request. The legal nonconforming use has been there for a long time. His father established the use many decades ago, and that's, that's the request for tonight. And I'm happy to answer any questions about it.
George, on the lots, they're all touched together, right? They're all together.
Correct, they're all adjoining lots.
And is it, the business itself has just kind of grown into that parcel?
Correct. Yeah, on the parcel that it grew into, he had a use permit. It was really more for ag kind of storage uses, but, you know, it just kind of got lost in the midst of time. It took me quite a while to understand kind of factually what was going on out there. But now that we have our arms around it, I think that it'll, it'll be, well, it'll be, you know, you're the ultimate decider, so we'd just like to bring it forward to you through the process, through the planning commission, and then to the board.
Thank you, George. Yeah, Angela.
So I've been asked if this, if this request to pull this item, if this item is unique and different from, from the other items that are on your agenda this evening for nuisance abatement. And it is, as Mr. Petrolakis identified, there is history on this property with prior land uses and with legal nonconforming, which do make it unique and different from the other nuisance abatement cases that you have on, on your consent item.
Thank you, Angela. Kind of seems, seems like a good idea to pause this nuisance abatement until the application goes through. Also, yeah, is there any public comment on this particular item? Any other? Sandra will bring it back to the board.
Motion to approve item B12.
To pause?
To pause.
Yeah, let's go ahead and get the motion down as best we can, then I'll confer with staff and make sure we get an appropriate motion for this, and see where we get to before I need to be out.
Okay, so what's your next?
So the motion was, what, man?
To pause the abatement process until the application of the...
Until the application is brought, or, tell me out with some language there, until the application is what?
Presented to the planning commission?
That works.
Okay, then, yeah.
Until the application is presented to the board.
Correct.
That would be an appropriate motion.
Right.
The appropriate motion that council just directed. I'll motion proceed forward with that.
Do I have a second? All right, I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Okay, B19, I'm going to have to excuse myself because I have a family member that is part of that association group.
Please let the record show that the chairman has left the room. Okay, on to...
B19.
I know. I'm going to turn my page. To B19, which is the approval of labor agreement between the County of Stanislaus and the Stanislaus Sheriff's Management Association. And we pulled this because of Buck. Is there any public comment? Any comments from the dice?
Can you tell, can you tell us what is the agreement?
So the terms of the agreement are outlined in the agenda item itself. The clerk of the board does have a copy of the agenda item and can provide it to you with the specifics.
Essentially the same agreement that asked me, unrepresented, 11% over three years. I'm paraphrasing.
It's actually...
Yeah, there's new ones. A four-year, a four-year contract. Four, four, three, three.
So if you flip to the last page, you'll see a summary table that outlines all of the modifications to the agreement.
So this is a modification to the contracts for...
This is their contract that they ratified.
And this is for all of Stanislaus sheriffs?
Lieutenants.
Lieutenants.
I can provide a brief summary. So there... This, this is one of 12 bargaining units that, that are represented for labor relations purposes in the county. This, this unit represents a little over 20 lieutenant positions that are at the sheriff's office, as well as the district attorney's office. And their contract has expired. It expired as of July 1st of this year. So this is a new agreement for an additional four-year contract with those employees. And they've negotiated this over the last several months, and we finally reached a conclusion. They've ratified the agreement, and we're here today for the board to ratify what we've negotiated with those employees that they've ratified.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I just want to also just state what a couple of, or maybe previously have been, community members have previously been sharing about the sheriff's department, lieutenants included. We see lots of excessive use of force from the department of, the sheriff's department. We've come to you all to ask for civilian review board, a raise...
This is about...
Yes, and I'm going to make the connection, please. A raise should also be considered, or you should consider all of the lawsuits that the sheriff's department have caused in our funding before you approve more money to deputies or lieutenants who use excessive force on their residents.
Any other comments of a comment? Bring it back to the board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries forward. Zero.
Looks like we also have a request to pull item B11 as well.
Didn't we already approve that?
That was already approved, yeah. So you can either...
You can ask if he wants to provide public comment anyway.
Okay. Come on up.
Good evening. First time I'm speaking, so I'm very nervous. So I'm talking about the Barnhart, 421, East Barnhart, B11. So I just bought that critical land in 2022. So everybody parking, like, you know, get a use permit since that, and then I borrowed that, and I start parking and apply right away the use permit. Somehow, I like, make some error in the permit, so I can do that again, like, properly with the somebody guidance. So give me, like, a little bit more time to apply that again permit, and I will be, like, no more violations.
Thank you. Angela, do you want to have Angela come up and just talk about it for a minute?
Or would it be code enforcement?
Sorry, Ben.
Nuisance abatement.
Sir, so I'll just jump in. The item has been approved by the board already. I think it would be helpful for both code enforcement and for planning to meet with him in the back, just to connect with him and try to support him through the process that's going to go forward from here, unless the board somehow was going to reconsider the action you've already taken.
That works, that works.
Yeah, you want to just meet in the back with staff? Okay, they can answer some questions for you.
Meeting with those...
Yes. All right, now to B20. B20. Who pulled B20? Bianca, was that you?
I want to share a little bit about my experience attending the Safe Spray Safe event last year. I was invited by the act commissioner to attend so that I can see all the great work that the county commissioner's office is doing to ensure that farmers and farmworkers access appropriate information so that they can make sure that they spray safely. It was a great experience to see farmworkers, new technology, and the presentations about, well, presentations, there was various presentations there for farmers. It was, it was good to be there. I learned a lot. I know that it's happening again this Friday. If you haven't attended the Spray Safe, I recommend that you do to even make connections if you're looking for the advisory committee members to, if you're still looking for seats at the Farm Worker Advisory Committee, this would be a great space to meet farmworkers that might fit that need. And I think, I just appreciate that. I, it's, the recommendation here, sorry, in the document, it lists the reasons why, sorry, I've got the wrong one. Community outreach is important. So the county commissioners and their staff play a critical role in public outreach, education, and the investigation of local pesticide use enforcement, enforcement concerns. That is true. I also just want to say that the commissioner has been very open to hearing us out, and her office has attended several community events that we have invited them to, to make sure that community members are informed about their role. sure that community members are informed about their role, not just as the pesticide regulation agencies, but also in weights and measures. And I am just very grateful that we are seeking grants like this to do more community education and awareness. I would like to see more grants sought by their department so that we can increase that community education. $36,000 probably doesn't go very far, and it is only for Spray Safe event. And as I mentioned earlier, community outreach and education is really important specifically when we're talking about the health of children. And so I, I would also recommend that you continue to encourage the commissioner to seek more funding so that they can continue to do the work that they're doing. We've collaborated on a pesticide drift guide for schools. We do need some resources to be able to go out to the schools and make sure that they know who to report to when there is a drift incident, and to make sure that this drift guide can get to the hands of the school districts. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Bianca. All right. Any others like to make public comment on this agenda item? I see none, I'll bring it back to the board.
Motion to approve.
I have it first.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. All right. Yeah, we're going to take a five-minute break.
You ready?
I'm just waiting for that.
Oh, it's, they're on.
They're on.
We're going to just pause for just a moment. Kelly's going to make sure we get online here.
Good evening, Chair Condit, Supervisors C. O'Hayes and County Council Boz. My name is Kristin Anaya, Senior Planner, here to present the Ordinance Amendment Application for Truck Parking. So this is a request to amend Title 21 of the Stanislaus County Zoning Ordinance to update existing codes that allow truck parking in the A2 zoning district of the unincorporated Stanislaus County in order to provide clearer, objective standards and add new restrictions to address community and agency concerns that have been raised with respect to truck parking. The ordinance amendments propose to update and consolidate truck parking requirements in a new proposed Chapter 2189 Truck Parking Facilities with corresponding edits to Chapter 2120 of the Stanislaus County Zoning Code for General Agriculture District and Chapter 2194 for Home Occupations. And so this request proposes to amend the current allowances for standalone parking facilities in the A2 or General Agriculture Zoning District serving tractor-trailer combinations with at least five axles capable of hauling a combined gross vehicle weight of 80,000 pounds. I'll hereafter refer to these vehicles as trucks. The A2 zoning district captures the majority of the county's agricultural areas, which you can see in various shades of green on the county map there. And so for some background, prior to 2012, the county did not allow truck parking in the A2 zone unless directly associated with and serving farm operations or agriculturally related businesses like processors, haulers, or shellers. The county was approached by a group formed by individuals in the local trucking industry to establish allowances for truck parking in the A2 zone to address the need for safe and secure parking facilities. And so following an ordinance development process guided by an ad hoc committee that was formed specifically to study the issue, the Board of Supervisors eventually approved an ordinance amendment in 2012 that permitted the use via two permitting pathways, which is on the screen there. So the first option is, on any two A2-zoned parcel at least one acre in size, you can obtain a home occupation business license to park three trucks and three trailers, provided all three trucks are registered to you as the business operator and you live onsite. The second option allows a property owner who lives on a parcel at least one acre in size to apply for a use permit to park up to 12 trucks and 24 trailers on a parcel, and this would entail discretionary environmental review and be subject to approval from the Planning Commission, with a finding having to be made that the use will not create a concentration of commercial uses in the vicinity. Under both of these permit types, the zoning code has specific criteria beyond that listed on screen that must be met in order to qualify for the license or permit as a means to control the scale and intensity of the associated development. I'll discuss criteria for each of these later in the presentation. In those instances where a proposed facility exceeds the allowed number of trucks or does not meet all of the applicable criteria, a request can be considered under a general plan amendment or rezone application to change the designation from A2 to Plan Development. The proposed amendments in this presentation do not address these larger facilities for 13 or more trucks. However, amendments to the general plan to propose new requirements for these larger facilities are anticipated to be presented to the board under a separate application on December 16th. And now I'll briefly cover the events and timeline that led to these proposed amendments. And so issues which led to this request ramped up in 2022 when the county saw a steady increase in community complaints tied to unpermitted truck parking facilities establishing in the agricultural areas of the county and a corresponding spike in related code enforcement cases. In 2024, the Board of Supervisors requested that this issue be looked into, which resulted in the General Plan Update Committee requesting that an ad hoc committee be formed to evaluate truck parking allowances and prepare recommendations. An ad hoc committee comprised of Supervisor Vito Chiesa and Planning Commissioner Chair Carmen Morad was formed in January of this year and has guided staff in evaluating issues tied to truck parking. This process, which took place between January and August, involved staff working with the ad hoc committee to conduct research and outreach to stakeholders and agency groups in order to understand issues and complaints tied to truck parking in the ag zones and identify gaps in the existing zoning ordinance that do not adequately address these issues. The outreach process was used to inform recommendations for updates to the county's ordinance, which ultimately aimed to provide better clarity to existing regulations and add new regulations to minimize issues between the truck parking facilities and surrounding agriculture and residents. During this process, staff met with a variety of county departments to identify issues with the county's current zoning ordinance and permitting process. We met with neighboring planning jurisdictions to see if they had experienced similar increases in unpermitted truck parking activity and how they are working to address it. We also met with other non-agency stakeholder groups, which consisted of individual stakeholder meetings with groups like county residents who have vocalized concerns about truck parking, local trucking business operators who have had applications on file with the county, and realtors who engage in agriculture and commercial real estate market. The first draft of the zoning ordinance, the proposed zoning ordinance, was presented to the General Plan Update Committee for consideration back in June. Following feedback from the ad hoc committee and General Plan Update Committee tweaks were made to the language of the drafts, and subsequent drafts have been shared with the public at an informational meeting. So at this informational meeting, we had 46 attendees back in July. Staff presented the contents of the drafts, followed by a Q&amp;A to allow feedback. The input we received covered a variety of areas. We heard concerns about truck idling, road impacts, and concerns about home occupation allowances for three trucks to be potentially reduced. Attendees asked questions about staff's approach to defining what a concentration is, whether cities would be subject to any of the proposed changes to the county's ordinances, and whether ag-related trucking businesses would be affected by the proposed changes. We also received comments about the statewide deficit in adequate truck parking facilities, as well as comments about the need to preserve prime farmland by not allowing paving and developing of ag land with commercial uses. Based on the feedback and questions at the informational meeting, additional edits were made to the proposed drafts, which were then ultimately shared with the General Plan Update Committee and the Agricultural Advisory Board. And so in a general summary, we highlighted the following major issues which we aim to address with the proposed zoning ordinance amendments. These include issues with aesthetic and site maintenance, achieving regulatory compliance with respect to sites storing and handling hazardous materials, agricultural land conversion, access and road requirements, defining and limiting what constitutes a concentration, clarifying how a parking area should be developed, concerns with sites meeting the Williamson Act principles of compatibility, and maintain compliance and enforcement following project approval. And so staff in the ad hoc committee identified the need to maintain allowance for truck parking facilities in the A2 zone, but with major updates and new restrictions and clarification incorporated into the zoning code applicable to truck parking requests permitted under use permits and home occupation business licenses. Based on this approach, staff has proposed to consolidate all of the proposed requirements into a new Chapter 2189 of the Stanislaus County Zoning Ordinance dedicated to truck parking facility requirements, which I'll discuss in detail in the next slides. If these amendments are approved, sites that are legally permitted under an approved use permit or otherwise legal nonconforming would not be subject to any of the new proposed regulations I'm about to discuss, nor do the proposed amendments apply to truck parking that may be allowed under a Plan Development, Commercial, Industrial, or Highway Frontage zoning district. And so as mentioned, the county's home occupation allowances currently permit a resident of any A2-zone parcel at least an acre in size to obtain a business license, which allows them to park three trucks and three trailers, provided they're all registered to an onsite residence. The proposed changes, which are in red, propose to reduce the number of vehicles to one truck and two trailers, remove the allowance for a one and a half acre developed parking area, and remove the current allowance for any onsite maintenance. The edits further clarify that no truck washing or stockpiling of parts or tires is permitted. And so for use permits, the proposed amendments will continue to allow the parking of 12 trucks and 24 trailers, but add a new requirement that all trucks be registered in the state of California, that the property owner has to have lived onsite for the last six months before applying for a use permit. It is proposed that a parcel must now be no larger than 10 gross acres to qualify to apply for a use permit and must not be enrolled in a Williamson Act contract. Current allowances for light onsite maintenance are proposed to now be prohibited, and amendments to add new clarification that trailers may not be powered while stored onsite, and then a truck washing or stockpiling of parts or tires may occur, has been added. The ordinance also proposed to be updated to clarify that the one and a half acre parking area that may be used for truck parking must include any area used for the driveway, as well as any area used to access an onsite restroom or office. More defined criteria for how the parking areas may develop are also proposed. These include new setbacks requiring 50 feet from adjacent residences and 20 feet from road frontages, and incorporation of screen landscaping along road frontages to screen the parking area, six-foot tall solid fencing installed around the approved parking area, and requirements for all the parking to occur specifically within delineated parking stalls. The allowance for the parking area to be gravelled is maintained, however, the amendments clarify that pavement may be used in areas that have not been in recent agricultural New requirements for onsite restrooms, prohibition of offsite advertisement of the parking facility's address, and requirements that the applicant pay fair share contributions to any city or county roadways based on the proposed truck route has also been proposed. State and local access requirements include Surface Transportation Assistant Acts, access requirements for non-California legal trucks will also be required to be met. Additionally, the proposed amendments will now prohibit submittal of a new application or project consideration by the Planning Commission if the project site has unpaid code enforcement fines. And so use permits for truck parking are proposed to have a five-year life, which may be extended by five-year increments if the property owner obtains a staff approval permit and has not violated the conditions of their use permit. Use permits approved under the proposed regulations will also be subject to annual inspections by code enforcement to verify compliance. If property ownership of a parcel with a use permit changes, it's proposed that a new use permit would be required to continue the truck parking onsite. And so the final major change to the proposed use permit allowances is to establish a clear definition of what constitutes a concentration, or in other words, how many truck parking facilities can develop in any given area. The existing findings required for the Planning Commission to approve a use permit to conduct truck parking in the ag zone is that the use, if approved, will not create a concentration of commercial or industrial uses in the vicinity. However, there is no definition or threshold for what a concentration is, which has in the past posed an issue for staff and the Planning Commission to interpret. The amendments proposed to set a threshold that will aim to increase the number of truck parking facilities near major transportation corridors and decrease them as they move further into more intensely rural ag areas. This concentration evaluation will take into account permitted truck parking facilities on A2-zone land, either LNC or with a use permit, but they do exempt out ag-related trucking businesses that operate under a Tier 1 or Tier 2 use permit. It also will include, in the evaluation, Plan Development zoning districts where truck parking is permitted as the principal use. And furthermore, this evaluation will not take into account unpermitted facilities operating in violation of the county's zoning ordinance or in a non-PD commercial zoning district. And so the threshold for how many truck parking facilities that can develop in an area is proposed to be dependent on how close you are to a transportation corridor, and I'll show visuals in the next few slides just to help out. The primary threshold is that within a one-mile distance of a state highway, a concentration would be created if there are more than two truck parking facilities in a one-mile radius of any property in the county. So basically, this is saying if I live on a property somewhere in the A2 zone, and I have two truck parking facilities already down the road within a mile of my parcel that are permitted, and the Planning Commission is now considering a new use permit request for a truck parking facility on the property across the street from me, that would create three truck parking facilities within a one-mile radius of my parcel, and I would therefore be in an area considered an area of concentration if that new site is approved. So the proposed findings required for project approval would therefore not be met, and the project should theoretically be denied by the Planning Commission. So for areas in the county that are further than a one-mile distance of a state highway, this threshold is proposed to be stricter, with only one truck parking facility permitted within a one-mile radius of any property in the county. However, a second truck parking facility may be allowed if that second site is located within a one-mile distance of a state highway. I have visuals. There's two measurements used in order to determine the concentration. First is looking at that one-mile distance within the state highway, which is delineated by that blue dashed line. State Route 99 is used as an example. The second metric is looking at the number of truck parking facilities in a one-mile radius, and again, this is any property in the county. So you can imagine that this kind of tan circle is a free-floating circle, not fixed to any point in the county, because the intent is that we don't want any agricultural parcel in the county to have more than two truck parking facilities in a mile radius of them, or one if you're more than a mile out from the state highway. And so looking at the proposed criteria, we can look at a scenario where there's an existing approved truck parking facility in blue and a new proposed use permit site in red. Because they're both within a one-mile distance of Highway 99, there's no concentration because the ordinance allows two truck parking facilities in a mile radius of other property. In this scenario, you have two existing truck parking facilities, and a third is proposed in red. In this case, you would have a concentration because you have three truck parking facilities in a mile radius from the property at the center of the circle. And even if one of the existing sites is farther than a one-mile distance from the state route, you have more than two truck parking facilities, so you're still in a In this scenario, you have an existing truck parking facility in a mile of the state Route 99, and a use permit is being requested on a parcel beyond the one-mile distance from 99. In this case, there's no concentration because you have no more than one truck parking facility beyond that one-mile distance, and you have no more than two truck parking facilities in a mile circle total. But if the existing site was also further than one mile from 99, then that would be subject to the reduced standard, which only allows one trucking parking facility in any one-mile radius and areas further than a mile out from the state highways. So in this case, you would have a concentration. So an exception is included in the proposed concentration assessment, which would allow the Planning Commission or Board of Supervisors to determine there's not a concentration when there's a physical or geographical feature that sufficiently separates facilities and results in facilities having vehicles accessing those facilities traveling different roadways. So here you can see 99 separates two truck parking facilities from another two in blue. And in this case, there would be discretion to consider whether 99 sufficiently buffers these sites from another if none of the traffic on either side of 99 uses the same roadways. And so the General Plan Update Committee was presenting these recommendations on August 7th of this year, and they made a motion to support the draft amendments. However, in light of discussion and public comment during that meeting, it was identified that a concentration threshold was only developed for use permits, whereas it should also be identified for large-scale truck parking facilities in order to limit the larger-scale facilities from concentrating near similar facilities under the proposed drafts. The committee requested that a concentration be limited, be developed for larger-scale truck parking facilities to reduce the potential for concentrations to develop and incorporate those edits into drafts presented to the Planning Commission. On September 8th, the Ag Advisory Board was presented the recommendations and ultimately voted to support the draft amendments, provided that code enforcement action continue forward on unpermitted truck parking sites. So there are currently four truck parking use permit applications in process that, if proposed, the ordinance amendments, they would be subject to those new requirements. All four would not be eligible for a use permit under the proposed amendments due to the concentration thresholds and parcel size limits. Staff has reviewed this project for consistency with the general plan, including the land use elements, sphere of influence policy, goals and policies addressing compatibility between uses and accommodation of siting of industries with unique standards, and agricultural elements, agricultural buffer policies, and policies regarding the Williamson Act. Staff found the proposed ordinance amendment to be consistent with the general plan. The project has also been determined to be generally exempt from SEQA pursuant to the common sense exemption. Accordingly, a notice of exemption has been prepared for approval, as the project will not have a significant effect on the environment. The project was considered at the October 16th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. No one spoke during public comment. At the close of public hearing, commissioners discussed the request, including asking if code enforcement is sufficiently staffed to perform annual inspections for approved use permit sites, the status of nuisance abatement hearing board, whether the county's proposed amendments align with processes to permit truck parking in adjacent counties, why 10 acres was identified as a maximum parcel size limit to qualify for a use permit, about fair share payments for impacted city and county roads, whether the proposed amendments will affect truck parking facilities that are connected to agricultural operations, and the purpose of limiting a use permit transfer upon sale of property. And so ultimately, on a vote of 7-2-0, the Planning Commission recommended that the Board of Supervisors approve ordinance amendment application number PLN 20250069, truck parking to the Board of Supervisors. Exhibit A of Attachment 1, the board report, provides an overview of all the findings required for approval, which includes findings regarding the project SEQA exemption, general plan consistency, project approval, and introducing, waiving, the reading, and adopting the ordinance. And that concludes my presentation. Staff's available for questions.
Any questions for Kristin and Angela?
Quick, just a quick question here. First, I can remember back in 2012, when I first got on the board, and I can remember Jim DiMartini coming up and saying, okay, you're going to be the deciding vote on this truck thing that we haven't been able to, you know, get through and come up with something. Obviously, we didn't do a very good job, what we came up with back then. Or things have evolved and changed, and so adjustments had to be made. So this looks great. First, I want to thank, you know, Vito and Carmen for leading this thing and helping make these changes, come up with this stuff. And then Kristin and Angela, I know, it's been a lot of work and a lot of time to get everybody on board, hopefully everybody on board with this. Quick question is just, on the home occupation one, why did we go from three to one? I mean, it seems like on the permitted A2 zoning, you know, it was 12, 24 trailers, stayed 12, 24 trailers, 12 trucks, 24 tractors, 24 trailers. Why did, what was the reasoning behind going from three trucks down to, tractors, three tractors, down to one tractor for the home? What was that process?
So part of it, you know, is you could consider it like an aesthetic and that kind of site perception issue where you have three tractor-trailers that actually takes up, you know, a bit of land on an A2 property. And so it was really, you know, one, reverting back to the allowances that we had pre-2012, and then also, there was just kind of issues and concerns with creep. So you have three tractors, three trailers, it's harder to kind of manage and, you know, keep track of, rather than if you had one tractor and one trailer. And there was some thought, when the ordinance was originally getting developed, that, you know, you might have a family of truckers, you know, to accommodate all of their needs. But really, when we were looking at kind of amending the ordinances, it was just identified as kind of a concern for, you know, code enforcement, maintaining compliance, and we were seeing, you know, that, just kind of issues with, you know, community compatibility with just the three.
So was it our concern, or was there stakeholder concern in the meetings and stuff? Did you get pushback from saying, we need to drop this down from three to one? Or I'm just wondering?
No, I think for all the reasons that Kristin, you know, mentioned, and one of them being creep, and then just a consistency issue with any other home occupation we have, which some of them do involve larger commercial vehicles, we only limit them to one. We don't look at how many people live in the house that might possibly need a larger truck. So if you're a contractor who's got a box truck, you don't get to have three. If your sons work for you, you only get to have one. And we're not saying that they can't do it, they just need to go through the use permit process. So there's a little bit more review, because the other thing that happens with home occupations is none of the neighbors are informed of what's going on. Those are done at a staff level, whereas a use permit, we get to reach out to the neighbors and we get to have more informed communications.
Okay. So there wasn't really a lot of public comment about it one way or the other, three to one?
No, we were just seeing a lot of issues with a lot of these had kind of started as home occupations and then kind of grew.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Angela, it looks like this started off, it sounds like it states there are 46 members of the public representing concerns. Did that stay consistent throughout, or as this amendment was developed, people started dropping off because they see the concerns that were starting to be taken care of?
You know, we had a consistent group of folks who were interested in this, but I think, and you know, I can't, I don't want to speak for them, but I think they got to a point where they were in, they were supportive of the ordinance amendment that had been developed, the draft that had been developed, and they were feeling confident enough that they didn't necessarily have to be there at every step.
Okay. Thank you. Any others? All right, I'm going to open it up to, open up for a public hearing. We do not have any written comments that came in for this particular subject, so I'm going to open up public comment. Does anyone out there have any comments? Come on up.
Hello, my name is Christine Nefflerly, and I've been a neighbor of several of these operations for the last year, and I would say that I've been coming to these meetings for the last year, trying to make as many of them as possible. And I'd like to say that actually I represent most of the people who have experienced the same things that I have. I know I'm the only person here tonight, and it's not because they aren't concerned, it's because they're tired, and I'm exhausted too. I really hope that you pass this, because it's really important to farmers that we're able to... able to, that our land is not compromised, and the areas where we're farming aren't compromised. There is, I know we talk about overregulation all the time in Ag, because as farmers, we deal with it all the time. But over the years, I've realized that regulation happens because of people who exploit the rules and the laws and think that they are above them. And this is clearly what has been happening here in this trucking situat, excuse me, situation in Stanislaus County. People have been going above and beyond the rules that had been set, and so clearly, new rules have to be set and they have to be enforced. We've seen so many, so many really dangerous things happening. I mean, we know from the news that there have been actually a lot of illegal operations and activities going on, on some of the places in our county. We know that there are issues with motor carrier permits, and people who are driving trucks that should maybe not be driving trucks, and stolen property. So I'm not saying that all these operations do that, but I'm saying that that does exist here, and it's easier to hide it out in the country. So please take these rules seriously. These women and the people on their staff have done so much work, and they've done a really good job, and they've listened to the people in the community and really taken what we have felt and what we have said to heart. And it's really meaningful. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Any others like to make public comment?
Hi, my name is Brandon Capistrano. So I park my trucks on my property, and I have a couple of questions. Because my stuff is all agriculture, my trailers, everything. I do the harvest season, and that's all I do. So I don't know if there's, if, like, how they were doing the, how they wrote it up, if that goes for everybody, or if agriculture, if there's something different that we could do, and for the, for the use for the parking of the trucks? If that makes sense.
Angela and Kristin, you'd be able to answer that?
So kind of generally speaking, without knowing all of the details, you know, the county still has provisions for a Tier One or Tier Two use permit to be obtained if, you know, there's trucks being used to haul exclusively, you know, farm product from field to, you know, processors, then, you know, potentially there's avenues with a Tier Two use permit for an agricultural service establishment that's maintained independently from the proposed ordinance amendments that are being considered tonight. So, I mean, there are avenues out there. We would really need to kind of, you know, work with you to kind of discuss the project details and understand more about, like, the business and the proposed use of the site. But, you know, we can connect with you.
I appreciate that. Can I get a card?
After, yeah.
And then, secondly, for the, that three truck and three trailers, since that's the permit that I have now, when I go to renew it, if this goes through, would it go down to one and two, or how does that work?
Since you meet the requirements, A, O.
So typically, business licenses, they kind of, you renew it annually. If you do let it lapse, then, you know, it's our interpretation that, you know, you wouldn't have to meet the current regulations.
Okay, so since I already have it, I fall into the three and three?
As long as that's maintained and you meet all of the applicable criteria of the home occupation ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Any others? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the board for comments and a motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. First of all, to Kristin and I, who have spent more time on this issue than anyone I have ever known to spend on any single issue. You know, as when the general plan update originally took this up, there was a subcommittee formed with Carmen Morad, the planning commission, and myself. And you talk about big picture, right? You've received the complaints. We know there's a ton of code enforcement, especially in my district, which brought this to the forefront. There was 20-some at one point, I don't know if that number is still valid, that were under code enforcement. So you start talking big picture, and then you tell staff to work some things, and there are problems after problems, right? Because it really came down to we hadn't defined the concentration issue, which is extremely difficult. You have a lot of nonconforming use, like Mr. Chip and Ari today, that there's some wiggle room, there was Gomes Trucking, there's Serpa, Ralph Serpa Trucking, milk transport. There are lots of these nonconforming uses pre-zoning. And so now, there's, and I'm not even sure where all the trucks came from, why they ended up down in Greenway and down in the Keys area, other than easy access, but there's a ton of them. I don't know where they were parking before, quite honestly. But it's a serious issue, and so we've tried to, you know, continue to tighten the box, really for enforcement, and so that planning staff, when someone comes in, they can actually answer the question, rather than, you know, work around and leave it up to us. And so this was our best shot at it. Carmen did great work, Kristin Dowd and Angela Freitas, we have a great team. Is it perfect? I'm not sure. Terry, you had asked the question about the home occupancy, and that's one thing that I thought for sure was going to be the most difficult part, what I would hear from people. And quite frankly, I haven't, even at the meetings. We need some truck parking, and again, there's the exemption for Ag. Obviously, my family has trucks, but they're seasonal, and like a lot of people have seasonal licensed trucks. But again, this is our best shot at it. I think it's a good product. I think it'll be a work in progress. I think we'll find more issues that we might have to, might have to come back to the board. But I think this is really good. Ms. Gamberly was, you know, in her neighborhood, right in that area, it's tough, it's a tough situation. And so I feel for them. The roadways are, it's not compatible with some of the roadways, where some of these have sprouted up. We're trying to figure out about a fair share payment, so that, because, you know, I think one 80,000-pound truck is equal to 1,200 car trips, something. So it does damage, so the roads have to be capable of handling 80,000-pound loads, turning radiuses, safe turning radiuses. So those things all come into play. And again, I think we've done a good job of trying to mitigate or at least answer those questions. And again, I'll be voting for it, and if we need to make changes in the future, I'm always up for that. 2012 was something that was a little quicker than this. This has been, it's been through a lot more committees, it's been a lot more outreach with folks. And so, again, I'm proud of staff and Carmen, kudos to Carmen.
Any other comments? I just want to thank staff and Vito and Carmen and all the work that was put into this. I know it is, like Vito says, it's a starting point. There probably will be issues that need to come back to the board, and we can blame it on Terry if it doesn't work out. But I'll be supporting this also. So I'm ready for a motion.
The motion?
I'll second that motion.
I got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
James Lane also, and Danny.
All right, public hearing to consider waiving of the second reading of an ordinance amending Title 16 of the Stanislaus Code and adopted by, or reference the California Code of Regulations Title 24, 2025 edition of the California Building Standards Code and the International Property Management Code. Angela Freitas and Danny.
Making his every three-year appearance tonight, you get Danny.
Chairman Condit, CEO Hayes, Councilor Boz, the remainder of the board, Danny Ferrer, Stanislaus County Buildings, pleasure to be here with you again, three years down the road. Today, I'm here for the consideration of 2025 California Building Code and 2021 Property Maintenance Code adoption. On how this all gets started, California Building Standards Commission develops the California Building Standards Code, known as the California Code of Regulations Title 24. They utilize a international code as the model code, and then they insert California amendments to develop the California Code of Regulations Title 24. The Building Standards Commission publishes and adopts the Title 24 in its entirety, its 12 parts, every three years, commonly referred to as the triennial code addition, code cycle. On July 1st, 2025, the Building Standards Commission published the adopted edition of the California Codes of Regulations, and it goes into effect January 1st, 2026. Regardless of ordinance, by state law, every city and county is required to enforce California Code Regulations Title 24. As far as administration goes, the Building Standards Commission doesn't mandate specific adoption measures as far as how to administrate the provisions of the code, but cities and counties include that within their ordinance. And the elements of the proposed ordinance that you're going to have the public hearing on today includes local amendments that align with counties' business practices. There are no new local amendments moving forward this year. The amendments that are included in this adoption process are being carried forward from the previous years, which is the agricultural building classifications, and then the sewage disposal standards in regards to Measure X, which was a voter initiative approval in January 1990. Amendments to incorporate Measure X in the Ag Buildings constitute a substantial amendment requiring findings to be filed with the state, with the Building Standards Commission. Measure X is currently adopted into Stanislaus County Code under Chapter 1610. All other amendments that are included are administrative in nature. There was a, and on June 30th, 2025, Budget Trailer Bill, AB 130, was signed in by the governor, and within it enacted a memoratorium on state local building standards for residential construction. Not all bad. Starting actually this last October 1st, going through the next six years, the June 20th of '31, local jurisdictions are prohibited from modifying residential building standards beyond those within this adopted code cycle. So the same residential standards will go forward for six years. There was one condition that was within the legislation that allowed us to include Measure X, and that was for modifications that were in effect as of September 30th of 2025. It's again, Title 24 is state mandated, and it's passed down to all the jurisdictions to enforce without funding. Staff's currently investing in resources, through a lot of training at this point in time, books, and that way we can implement these measures in the least invasive measures as possible. Also included is the International Property Maintenance Code, which mainly is enforced by the Code Enforcement Division at Department of Environmental Resources. International Property Maintenance Code established minimum standards for the maintenance of existing buildings. It is incorporated and referenced by Title 16 of the Stanislaus County Code. The amendments of Section 16.25.030 propose to reflect changes to the number of specific sections and in line with counties' business practices. Again, even for the International Property Maintenance Code, no new local amendments are being proposed. The amendments adopted in the past are being carried forward, with one specifically defining the code official, which declares the Director of the Environmental Resources and the Chief Building Official. And this allows just efficiencies for the Director of DER in trying to address nuisance and abatement with the Code Enforcement Division. For staff recommendations, recommend to conduct a public hearing and adopt by reference the California Code of Regulations Title 24, 2025 edition of the California Building Standards and the International Property Maintenance Code, 2021 edition as outlined in the staff recommendations, 1 through 5 of the board agenda item. And with that, if you have any questions?
Any questions for Danny?
No changes.
No changes.
Yes.
Open up for public comment. Any public comment on this agenda item? Bring it back to the board for a motion.
Just wanted to say, Danny looks nice in the tie.
He does. He's a good-looking suit.
I thought you were saying a sharp suit, Danny.
There is a motion to approve.
I have a first.
Thank you.
And I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? unanimous.
Not to say his job is usually inspections and out in the field, so that's why.
You don't wear that in the field, you should.
That's right, that's right. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to number three. It's a cancellation of a public hearing to consider an appeal of the planning commission's denial of use permit application and as stated on the agenda. Okay, just going to go ahead and open it up for public, I don't think, we don't need a staffing department, we're just going to open it up, public comment. Scott called.
Thank you for waiting all this time to get here.
No, no problem. This is, I better get these out. This is a quick note, cannot possibly be conveyed, the gratitude Marcy and I have for the time that you have spent on this issue. To hear our concerns, to take the time to drive out and meet with us is to us above and beyond. And though it's your elected position, we felt as though you truly care, and that's not always the case, elected or not. Many times in life, things are underappreciated and then taken for granted. And it's so very important to us, to us, you all understand that certainly not the case in this situation. So once again, I just want to thank you. Not the words enough to express our gratitude for your patience, understanding on this effort, and thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you for being here. Marilyn Silva? Evening. Thank you for being here and waiting all this time.
I'm opposed to this. I got a letter today saying that they temporarily withdrew their application for the compost thing, but I live out there, I'm a bus driver for the schools right there, Mountain View and Chatham. I drive those roads. And I know this is, it's a good project for, you know, the environment and everything, just not in the area. I want to briefly outline a few things. The industrial compost facilities are known for frequent fires. They've had over 390 major fires in 2022 with the composts facilities in Northern California, America. Oh, God, so nervous.
You're okay.
I'm a bus driver, not a speaker.
You're doing great.
Just think you're driving a bus. Just think you're driving a bus.
Sit down, no. So the fires get up to 450 degrees. They release toxic gas mix, methane, carbon monoxides. It's, they're trying to propose it to be near a school. Our students are going to be out there trying to learn. They're going to be breathing this, the odors itself are going to be toxic. There's potential asthma, allergy reactions to this, nausea, long-term respiratory problems. We need to really consider where this industrial facility is going to be held. It shouldn't be in a community. It shouldn't be in residential area. Not only just school there, we have restaurants, we have, you know, it's, it's just, you guys need to seriously think where this should be. it's, it's just, you guys need to seriously think where this should be held. You know, the traffic, you know, having big rigs, dumping it in the thing. I know they're talking about having it, oh my gosh, new designs and everything, blowing air into it. That's got to make noise, you know? The traffic accidents, it's going to, potential hazards with all the vehicles, future road congestion. I drive a bus out there. Cars don't like to be behind a bus. We stop to drop off our students. We pick them up. We take them to school. We need to get our students home safely. Cars pass our red lights. We have a stop sign. You know, it just, please consider putting us somewhere else. Thank you.
Marilyn?
Marilyn?
Could you just, you had said something at the very beginning, and I think it needs to be on the record, that you had said you're against this. Tonight is a cancellation hearing. You're not against the cancellation hearing, are you?
No, no. Just, I'm opposed of it being out there in the area. No, please cancel it. Please keep it, not in our area. Thank you for clarifying that, yes.
Can I just, Marilyn, really quick, one last thing. Do you, on the bus, do you guys actually, do you make stops on West Main? Do you guys make?
We do, we do. We have three buses that go down there. Mine travels from Mitchell Road all the way to Carpenter. They're talking about taking it down, bringing the trucks up, Fulkirk, Carpenter, down in West Main, and then into the facility that they want to build there. I come down Fulkirk. I have 10 stops on Fulkirk from Mitchell to Carpenter.
Perfect, okay, good to know.
Yeah.
All right.
West Main, I have six myself. The other girls, you know, they have other stops there. But, yeah, we do.
On the route. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, thank you for being here so late. Anybody else like to make public comment on this agenda item? All right, I'll bring it back to the board for a vote of cancellation.
Make a motion to approve the cancellation.
Second.
I got it first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Okay, moving on. Correspondents, we do have correspondents. We're going to acknowledge those, received correspondents, and refer to recommended on the agenda. Or supervisor reports? Any supervisor reports? Danny?
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were looking this way.
Oh, no, I was just looking that way. No, there was an eventful week. We had the Veterans Day Parade here in Modesto, and I know there was many others across the county. So this year's was at the Gala Arts Center, very well attended. So enjoyed being there. We also did a, at the community hospice, they did a flag raising ceremony in honor of Veterans Day for former Modesto Mayor Garrett Marsh, who served in the armed forces. So every year, they have a tradition of honoring somebody. Last year's honorary was Colonel John Rogers. So his flag was raised last year. This year, it was brought down, and then Garrett, Mayor Marsh's, was raised for 2025. Also, I appreciate my colleagues passing the agenda item. It was a consent item directing some community benefit dollars towards helping with the food insecurities that were brought up by a lot of the nonprofits today. And we're going to be working with Stanislaus First Five and with other FRCs. The plans that my office and Supervisor Withrow's office are conducting is we're teaming up with the local grocer here in town to do 100 Thanksgiving meals next week. And then also, we've worked with a local business owner who does jackets and distributing jackets to elementary schools in our respective districts, and then also helping the local food banks with the depletion in supplies they've had over the past few weeks with the reliance on a lot of the resources at the food banks. So we'll be trying to replenish some of them. It's 50,000. I know it's just a small step, but like a lot of the nonprofits said today, it's a step in the right direction. And any person that we could help out during these trying times is good for the county. So I appreciate all of our colleagues teaming up and joining up and doing that. Thank you.
Anyone? All right. Legislative, fiscal, management?
Okay, just a quick report. Definitely need to acknowledge the conclusion of the, the federal government shutdown after 43 days. Everybody's well aware of that. You've seen all the publicity. And also, I, I think it's been well reported as well, and just want to confirm that all Stanislaus County SNAP or CalFresh recipients have received their full November benefits and allocations. I want to acknowledge that later this week, on Thursday, we do have our state, federal advocates will be here visiting with us. I think all five board members, as well as department heads, are scheduled to be working with our legislative team on evaluating the bills that were passed over this last session as well as preparing for the upcoming session. So that's this Thursday, looking forward to that. And then I do need to make an announcement, and this will also be publicized on other various media channels for the county, that in addition to that ongoing road closure that we have on Roselle Avenue for the North County Corridor, the BNSF Railroad is going to close Clarabelle Road this weekend between Lit Road and Terminal. So right there where that railroad crossing is, BNSF will be closing the road to make some needed repairs. That'll be from 9:00 AM Friday to 7:00 PM on Saturday. So you'll want to avoid that area if possible. There will be detours directing traffic down Sylvan and Patterson. But given the other challenging traffic that's been in that area already, that's a significant closure that the public needs to be aware of. And just wanted to make sure we took every opportunity to mention it. So that concludes my report.
Thank you for that report. Just my phone's going to get busier. Deputy Flores, Deputy Serrano, thank you for your overwatch. Appreciate you guys. And Roger?